Welcome to another program here on AM Quincy. Joe Catalano with you. This time, we welcome Quincy Councillor-at-Large Anne Mahoney for a discussion about what's happening at City Council News. Nice to see you, Anne. Thanks for coming over.
It was great to see you, Joe. Thank you very much for having me on.
It's always a pleasure. Our doors are open. As I've said, please come over anytime. We are back in session now in the City Council, brand-new City Councillor in James Devine.
It was such an interesting race. You know, we had a lot of great candidates that came out, which is always fantastic. And, you know, James Devine worked very hard, and he is now our councillor. He sits next to me, and I welcome aboard.
And he's your councillor, too?
He is my councillor, yeah. It was just interesting, because it's funny when you go from having Councilwoman Muji that had been there for so long, and then the open seat, and then you realize, wow, we don't have anybody. And even though I'm a councillor-at-large and trying, you try to... It's a hard job, because the wards are... It's a lot of work in the wards, and they need that representation. And I know Jim's going to do a great job.
Yeah. What's the process for getting a new councillor up to speed? Because, I mean, you did it once, you know, a long time ago.
It is not... I mean, there is no onboarding. It's just kind of either you're thrown into the deep end, and you've got to figure things out. So I think he's going to be working with all of us. And, you know, he was literally sworn in to the meeting. And he was very funny, because I think he wanted to ask a question, and he just jumped in there, and I said, "You'll figure it out." And as it goes, you know, when I was a councillor, you know, you kind of had an introduction to some of the departments and learned what the departments did. So there is some onboarding, and you meet everybody, you have questions. And then you... I said to him, "The hardest thing I think I found was the writing the resolves, the whereas."
Yes, the legalese, yeah.
The legalese of those types of things. But I said, "It can be as simple as, 'I'm looking for an update.'" You know, you don't have to... Don't get caught up in the language of legalese. You can just ask, "I'm looking for an update."
Yeah. But there's no, like, City Councillor school?
No, there is. Well, I think there's things you can do. Like, I went to the... The state has some things that you can do. You can take some classes online. Like, I do... I take virtual classes all the time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So there's all different things you can self-educate, but it's really something that you have to do for yourself. And that's not necessarily for the city of Quincy. That's more, you know, just learning how other communities are doing things. I find it very interesting, because I do think you make better government by knowing how other people are doing things better, and how we can increase the transparency that we have here in the city. But to do that, too, you have to have the administration that wants to embrace all of those things, too. So it's just a matter of, what is it you're trying to accomplish as that councillor? And how are you trying to communicate it? So I think Jim's first thing is, he wants to make sure he's talking to people. He's doing a great job.
Yeah. Well, I mean, he's thrown right into the fire with the Corey Hills lease issue. It's in Ward 4. Part of it's in Ward 4, at least, so he will be voting on it.
Yeah.
And so far, it still remains an ordinance committee, right?
It is. I don't... I think he's going to have to explain that. I'm not sure if he's going to... I think he works for Granite Link, so I'm not sure what the situation's going to be there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So as part... I don't know. I just... He mentioned something the other night to me. I think he's looking for resolution as to whether or not he can or cannot. That hasn't come out publicly, so that will be something he has to find out.
Oh, okay. So I know he's a contractor by trade, so maybe he does done some private contracting work for them or something?
Yeah, I'm not sure. So again, that's something that he'll have to determine through... It's a conflict, if it's a conflict of interest or not. So that hasn't come out publicly, but I know he mentioned something the other night that he's discussing it.
Interesting. So the legal department will consult with him on that.
Yeah. And that will be something that he needs to, you know, address to the public himself.
What about yourself? How do you feel about this proposed 99-year lease to Corey Hills Associates? It's, what, over 200 acres, I think, is included in this?
Yeah. So when it came in as the red line, I was surprised at the way the administration brought it in. You know, it came in as an order from the mayor.
Red line, Anne?
So the lease came in... They brought it to the council, and we had the first ordinance meeting, and they had the 2002 lease that was presented to us. And it was redlined, meaning they had gone through it and taken out what they thought was not necessarily deemed for the next 99 years. And that was the presentation was kind of, you know, "QHA is doing a great job. We have a great partner, and they're looking for 99-year lease because they want to do some things up there." I think QHA came up and spoke, you know, "Not a master plan, but kind of spoke, and there's a lot of things we could do. You know, there's so many things that we could do, but we need this 99-year lease to be able to do it." And I was shocked that there was no presentation from the administration of, like, you know, where it's... How it started, and where it has come, and how we got to 28 years, and what the next 22 years are going to be. So that surprised me. And we had a public forum that first night, and a lot of people talked about trails. And my concern was more that we weren't talking about audit. Like, where's the audit? Where can we see that, you know, QHA is being held, you know, that is processing what we're expecting for payments? And then what... How do we process that to make sure that we're having that done on a regular basis? In the lease itself, it says that, you know, the city of Quincy will pay for that audit. But it's been 28 years. We should have that backup.
So there's been no audit in 28 years?
Well, just Monday night, they said that there has been audits. They haven't presented it to the council. So again, this is transparency. So you want us to sign onto a 99-year lease, and the presentation is, "Hey, everything's going great." And my question is, not only, you know, is QHA holding up their end of the bargain, but then also on the city side, what the monies that we are collecting, you know, they're going into accounts. 10% is going into... I have it right here, so I can... I want to make sure I'm doing this. 10% is going into an oversight account. 50% is going into the TPW enforcement account, enhancement account, and 40% is going into our general funds. So when you're breaking that down, you're seeing that. What I want to know is, you know, for those two, that 10% and 50%, how are we spending that money? And how is that being audited? To make sure, again, transparency, the taxpayers of City Quincy are the ones who should be benefiting from the money that's coming in from this lease. And although they said in the paper that they collected over $7 million in the course of the last... Since 2004, you know, the question is, is that the appropriate amount? And then what's the comparison? I would say the comparison, if they were to pay taxes up there, how much more are we collecting from QHA? Is there a fair balance?
Oh, all right. Because they're not paying taxes, right? This is in lieu of taxes?
They're not paying... This is in lieu of taxes. So let's just say, I did a quick, rough number for their taxes. So in the year of 2022, we collected $683,000 in total from QHA. And when I did their, a rough, you know, commercial tax base of their property, it was coming in around $660,000, $660,000. So we're getting about, you know, $23,000 more than we would in taxes in that one year. But there's been years that we got much less. So we do have to do that comparison, too. Because when we changed that lease from that red line, there's things changing in that lease. A real comparison of the 2002 to the current lease that they want to go to 99 years, 2023's lease, needs to go line by line to understand, what are we getting? Are we getting more? Or are we getting less? Because they're actually taking out the rentals of the golf carts.
That came up in the meeting this week, yeah.
Yeah. And then also, what were we supposed to get in the original 2002 lease? You know, in the original 2002 lease, we were supposed to have recreational facilities, which were not defined as those soccer fields and the baseball diamonds. There were specific things they were talking about. And it was talk of an ice skating rink, a pool, badminton courts, like, different things were put in there. Now, the question is, is why weren't they done? And were they documented as to why they weren't done? And really, there's no... I mean, to say that they were never there, they are definitely in that 2002 lease. So we really need to understand, is QHA not in compliance of their lease? Are they default? You know? And if they are in default, how do we get them not to be in default so that we can have these things? And then, more importantly, as we move forward, is that all we want? Is, you know, we want to make sure that we're having what we're expecting, but this, like, in the last 28 years, things have changed, too. Pickleball is huge. Do we want a pickleball court? Can we have a pickleball court? You know, are there things that we can... I'm not saying that that's the end-all, be-all, Joe. I'm just saying, where's the communication to figure out how we move forward? And 99 years is a long time.
Yeah. And is it 99 years starting in 2023, or is it added on to the existing 28-year?
So it would be 99 years from the day that it gets approved. So if 99 years is the length of the lease that gets approved, it would be 99. So just like in 2002, in 1994, it was signed, but then it was reopened in 2002, and it started in 2002. So the original lease started in 1994. Some changes happened in 2002. So the lease we're looking at is 2002, but the actual lease started in 1994. If we were to sign this lease, let's say we were to sign it in 2024, the 99 years would start in the 99 years. Because it would end this lease and start the new lease. It's not tagging on.
So it resets the clock, basically?
Yeah. It kind of resets the clock. That is my understanding. But there's some definite... There's definitely some need of clarification.
I agree, because I haven't been able to get the same answer from everybody I've talked to.
Exactly. So in there lies the biggest problem, right? So we have had some councillors say, "Can we change the language?" Absolutely. That is our job as councillors, to review this language. And we should be reviewing it line by line to make sure that we understand what we're signing onto.
It's public property, right?
It is public property.
It's city-owned land?
Yep. It's city-owned land, and it's public property, and it's supposed to be open space. And the recreational facilities were defined in the lease so that they could have the golf club, so they could have the buildings that they have, the restaurant, and they have the enhancements that are up there. But it's still defined as open space. And one of the biggest changes in the new lease, the 99-year lease, is that it's taken out a lot of that open space and replaced it with recreational facilities and replaced it with commercial facilities. So we all have to define, what does a commercial facility mean? And what does it mean for the open space? And is it going to be more open space? How tall, if they're going to have a hotel, how tall is it going to be? They did do a presentation to Ward 4 back in September. I was not able to attend it, but I did know people who did attend it, who called me and told me what was presented. And there was a slide presentation, and it had a hotel in it. That same presentation should be shared, and has been asked to be shared with the full council. I've asked at several meetings. I've called the council president and asked for it, and, you know, it hasn't been shared. And I'm not asking for it myself. I'm asking for the public, the transparency.
Is there a reason given for that not being shared publicly?
No, there hasn't been a reason for it to be shared. I think... And it wasn't, you know... The thing is, is when councillors have meetings, they don't have to have them televised. They don't have to. And so... But they are public. And the sense is that there was a public presentation, shared with the public, a smaller population of the public. But this change, it's going to happen, and it's going to affect the entire city.
Well, it's already been talked about, that that main access, the Rocheteau Drive-Willard Street intersection, is already one of the top five most dangerous in the state.
And that just came out just this past Monday. I don't think anybody needed to be told that, in your drive over there.
Well, right. Anybody that lives around here, yeah.
But the fact is, is that they presented a red-line 99-year lease to the city council, telling us that this is going to be a great... It's a great... They're a great partner, which they are. This is not to say QHA is not a good partner.
Corey Hills Associates, by the way. Just to clarify, yeah.
I know, because I can tell you, QHA is very confusing. But nobody's saying that they're not a good partner. We're just saying that where have the checks and balances been to prove the transparency to the city of Quincy's taxpayers? That we are getting... The due diligence is being done to ensure that we're getting what was promised in the first 50-year lease. And then, how are we protecting and enhancing that next 99 years to make sure that we are going to be able to... If it's 99... Is 99 years the correct number of years? And then also, what will that exchange be for the taxpayers of the city of Quincy? It might sound like 10% is a lot of money, but I'm telling you right now, if you're looking at our taxes, and you're getting, you know, roughly $23,000 more, you might get more in the year. But there's going to be years, if you're not collecting taxes, like COVID. In the years of COVID, we were not collecting, because they were not able to produce.
No functions or golfing. Well, maybe they had golfing, but no functions.
Right. And the point of that is, is that in those years, we, the city of Quincy, were also suffering from that. But, you know, was... And I know Corey Hills was... Corey Hills Association was available for PPP money. Like, where did their PPP money go? Again, this is the audit of what...
Payroll Protection Plan. I'd just like to clarify the acronyms.
No, I absolutely understand, and I should be doing it myself, but there are so many of them. But these are the things, like, in a fine... If you were truly... You know, we talk about business acronyms, and, you know, the administration likes to say they're the CEO of the city, Chief Executive Officer of the city. But if you're truly doing that, and you're truly looking at this with a lens of a business eye, you're going to be looking at it just like that. Corporation A versus the owners, the city of Quincy, and is this a good deal for our city? Rather than looking at... I don't want to personalize this. You know, the O'Connell's have done a lot of work for the city of Quincy, and they have done a lot of great things for the city of Quincy.
Well, it was a dump, let's not forget. It was a terrible dump, yeah.
Oh, no. But it was a business deal that they were creating. They didn't come...
Yes, yes.
And they were coming to solve a problem that the city of Quincy had with a proposition, a business proposition. And I would like to remind that that's the issue there, is that it was a dump, and it was a risk. And that risk was taken on 28 years ago, and it has proven to be successful. But that success and that risk has mitigated itself. There are some other things that we need, like, when you go up there, when you look at some of the exhaust issues that they're having, we have to make sure that those things are being audited as well.
Okay, all right.
So again, this is... I mean, I've worked with... I've worked my entire life, and I've also worked with friends. And when you do, you have to really push that, like, that make sure that when we're talking about what we're dealing, that everybody is going to come out intact, or your friendships don't come out intact. So it's... The way you do that is by really saying, "This is... We're talking about a business. This is a business deal. I'm going to look at it in a business lens. I'm going to make sure that if..." You know, I think the administration said that they used their legal team, and the mayor made these decisions. I would have thought maybe they would brought some people in from maybe outside to make those decisions. And the audit should have been done prior to the red line coming to the city of Quincy, so they could show us what they were doing. And if they've had prior audits, they should have already shared it with us. We had to ask that for the other night.
All right.
And I just want to make one other comment.
Yeah, please.
You know, this started back in the Sheets administration, and, you know, the current administration... The current mayor was... Worked for the Sheets administration. He was then the Park Department during the Phelan administration, and now he's the current mayor. So the length of this lease, the one person who's had the thread through the whole thing is the current administration, is our mayor. And, you know, that's something that we have to keep in mind. And I say that because, you know, it was an opportunity for this administration to come before us and explain the full entity, to remind people of that. It was reminded the other night by Chuck Phelan, Councillor Phelan, because he was a councillor.
Yes, yeah.
The transparency of where we started to where we are today, and to where we're going. It was... It's been one presentation from Corey Hills Association, and no presentations from the administration showing us where we're going. And we have all of that information. It's not lost in translation. It needs to be presented in a transparent way.
So I'm guessing, then, as it's written right now, you would not support it?
As it's written right now, I could not support it. And I could tell you, one of the reasons why is because it does not solve, it says right in the lease. There's many things it says in the lease, but there are things that, you know, there were things in the prior lease that protected the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. And the current lease, it's opening up the doors for, you know, to be able to have Corey Hills could go out and actually mortgage out the property. And there's no say. It's just a say to the mayor, and there's no say to the council. And who knows? It doesn't mean that this is the current mayor. It could be any mayor in the 99 years that could happen. So things could happen in the next 99 years. But I think we need to put some restrictions on that to make sure that we're protecting the taxpayers, whether they are today, or whether they are in the future, if it's 99 years. I will definitely not be here in 99 years. So I don't think the current administration will be either. So it is really about that, because this is a lease that, you know, when you say that, it might be okay for today, but we don't know who we're talking about in the future. So we want to make sure that, you know, if we're going to be able... And that doesn't mean that they're going to be mortgaging it out to actually do work at our site. It could be mortgaged out to do work at any of the facilities that they own someplace else.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So that is the way it's written.
Interesting.
And then also the...
What are the facilities that they own?
QHA... Well, I think the Marina, they... QHA rolls up into a bigger corporation that owns other assets.
Okay.
So when you... That becomes an asset of their corporation.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. That lease is not... QHA is not a separate entity altogether. It's a portion of a larger organization.
Gotcha, okay.
And then finally, there's no... Right now, the solution for Rocheteau Drive and Forest Brook Parkway, there's no monetary mitigation money coming from Corey Hills Association for that. And if we were to do that, the biggest component of the traffic that would cause more traffic up there would potentially be the enhancements that are happening up there. So they have to have... They have to play in the solution of that.
Okay.
And right now, we are at... The state is at 25% design.
Design on that, yeah.
But they have absolutely no funding associated with that. So we could be waiting years for that solution. So 22 years left in the lease with no solution to the traffic problem, that's the first thing that has to be really addressed. And the light isn't it. I mean, I think it could be, but, you know, our city solicitor is not a traffic engineer, so I'm not sure if I would want to go a little bit further with that.
So the current lease will stay in effect unless a new lease is approved, is that right?
Yeah. And quite honestly, I get the sense that QHA, that they are opening this dialogue up, and they came back with a presentation of the trails. We went for a walk with the trails.
Yes, yep.
I think, you know, as these dialogues, if they create a steering committee, like was suggested by the public the other night, I think some of this stuff can be worked out, and then also going back and looking at the current lease. They were willing to do some of those trails. They should have been done, but they're willing to do the work. So I think there's ways that we can find accommodations to fix these things. But right now, if we were to look at the 50-year lease, I'd say that some of the things are in default. The parking lot of the ballfields, the roots are pulling up the parking lot.
Oh, really?
And they're in charge of maintaining that parking lot.
Okay, all right.
And, you know, I asked the chief of staff the other night if he'd been up there, and he said no.
Okay.
That's concerning to me. A 99-year lease being put in front of us, and the administration has been up there to audit some of the basic things.
Okay. So there's no real sense of urgency, because there's 22 years left on the existing lease, right?
One would hope. We have a lot of things that have to come back. I do want to say one thing, that the presentation that was made by the public, it was phenomenal.
I watched most of it, yeah.
They did a ton of work. They did ask if they could present their PowerPoint. You know, QHA was able to present their PowerPoint, and the public was asking if they could present their PowerPoint. I guess they were denied.
I didn't know the public had a PowerPoint.
They did. They had a huge PowerPoint. They presented it to all of us. I was going through it. And what was disappointing was that they asked, and I went out and said, "Thank you for people's coming." They said they wanted to present it, and I said, "Oh, was there a rule that you couldn't present it?" I didn't know of any. And they said that the chairman wouldn't let them present it, which is unfortunate, because I think the public at home could have benefited from seeing the other side of the conversation. Not that I'm looking to have that division. I'm looking to have the collaboration, but that feeling of not being allowed is another piece of the divide that happens in our government.
Okay. So for the short term, it stays in the ordinance committee for further discussion?
And I think there's going to be... It was a good discussion the other night. I think that was what was beneficial of it. And it's not a... There was no hard, like, no, other than the fact that we were seeing things in the current lease that we do have to go back and account for. So, I mean, the hard no is that we're not talking about a 99-year lease yet. We're still talking about the first 50 years.
Okay, all right. What else is on your mind these days?
I think the other thing that I brought just recently into the council was the 610 McGrath Highway. There was a resolve for the 610 McGrath Highway. And the reason why I brought that forward was, it's a building that was just purchased. And I looked into it. I saw it... I actually saw it in the Quincy Sun as an acquisition by the city of Quincy. So like I always do, I follow up with a question of, "What's this building that we purchased, and where do we get the funds to purchase it from?" And I was surprised to see that we got the funds from the District Improvement Financing, the $53 million that was just approved last year.
How did you find that out, Anne?
Like I always do, I called the auditor, and I just asked a question, and I asked if she could... If I could follow through, knowing that the city purchased it. And they had said, and I think what was said by the administration on your show, on your show, on his podcast, and in the Quincy Sun, had said that it was purchased by the ARPA funds.
Correct.
So I started by looking at the ARPA funds, and I didn't see it there.
Okay.
And when I didn't see it in the ARPA funds, I said, "Could we just pull where the monies came from?" And when she pulled... She was able to tell me that, and then I said, "Could we go a little bit further, and bit further, and could I get the backup for that? So I got the backup, and it's definitely coming from the District Improvement Financing Fund.
The fifty-three million?
Yep. Memos and everything, I got it all. And, and then I asked daily, could you tell me if there's a transfer of the funds? Even though I knew from the ARPA funds that everything's been encumbered for the forty-three million, forty-six million.
So it's all, it's all spent?
Yeah. So it's, if, if it's not spent, it's, it's encumbered.
It's called for, yeah, okay.
And unless they, unless I'm missing something, or unless they can pull something back. And some of it's salaries, they're paying salaries to people. And, you know, a lot of it is, 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 you know, we purchased buildings, we've, we've done a, we've, we've spent a lot of money. Some of it was putting people up at the hotel that, up at the Marriott Hotel that had COVID.
Yes.
Administration, the, 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 the executive office was, you know, put up at the Marriott Hotel because they had COVID, just recently, last October.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, when everybody else was thinking COVID was over, we were housing people with COVID money up, but, but my point of this is that, it may be small money that that's happening. Transparency is not happening with the ARPA money in other communities. They are sharing how they're spending it, you can go online, you can see how they're spending it.
Yeah.
We don't have transparency in anything we're spending, the CPA monies as well. I mean, if you go to Boston, or you go to Cambridge, Somerville, pretty much any town around, you can go onto, online and see how the money that CPAs are being spent.
The community preservation, okay.
Yep. And you can see where their money's being spent, where it's being allocated, and they'll show you plans as to what is being, how that money's being spent.
Yeah.
So I guess, I keep coming back to this, it's transparency, because if I have to hunt this hard to find out things, I put this resolve together because this administration has gone out and said that they were using ARPA money. It was District Improvement Financing money, which is meant for the downtown. There was no place that that building was identified, although that, that building does reside in the footprint of what the URDP is. However, you know, District Improvement Financing was not to purchase a building for Alcoholics Anonymous, and now that's a key, too. I have a, you know, there's a lot of disparity that's happening in the City of Quincy, and to itemize one group and say that this is what we, what we need disparages all the other groups that don't have that same ability. And then we become the owners of the program that, that we're putting into that building. That's taxpayers' dollars that are going to a building that, right now, has, the Alcoholics Anonymous, the group itself, could probably use an infusion of money more than it needs a building. And it's a concern that I have.
Okay, all right. The resolve was also cosponsored by Counselor Liang as well.
So I put that, I put that out in a, a meeting, and I held it on the table, and I asked my counselors, my fellow counselors, to look into what I was asking. They could do the same thing, they could have made the same inquiries, where did the money come from?
Yeah.
Do, do your own investigation, and Counsel Liang joined me, and I appreciate her support on that.
Would it be possible to refund the DIF accounts with the money that was used to buy that building from ARPA funds?
Well, if it's encumbered, I'd say no. And then you'd have to get the, that, that, we've already, we've already collected the full forty-six million dollars from the federal government for that. So unless there's new ARPA funds that are coming that I don't know of.
Okay.
The answer would be no.
Okay.
And I think too, too, they, they came back, and I made it seem like there was a grant for the Mount Wallace Cemetery. That's coming from your American Rescue account as well.
Oh, the donation project.
There is no special grant coming, that is, that was, that was encumbered, that was the last two-point-five million dollars that was encumbered. I think it's two-nine, two-point-nine million dollars encumbered in that, because I inquired about that, too.
Interesting. There is a summary, I'm sure you have this, too, of the CARES ARPA expenditures. Is that, that's not adequate, though? Do you think that it needs to be more detailed than that?
The summary of what, on the, the site, you mean?
No, of, of all the CARES ARPA funding.
Yeah.
This was, you know, put out by the administration a while ago.
Yeah. No, I think it should be more than that.
More than that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the detail is, the devil's in the details, is what I like to say.
Yeah.
You, you know, all other communities, basically, were very transparent about, not all, but most other communities were very transparent, and actually did a, they, they did a request of what people thought we should be using, they, they should be using these Recovery Act money for, and this administration never did. And we purchased over twenty million dollars worth of acquisitions of buildings, which I don't care where the funds come from. It says in our charter, the charter that we stand up and we get sworn into, that Mr. Divine, Counsel Divine got sworn into the other night, basically saying that we'd uphold a charter, it's, it's section thirty in our charter that basically says two-thirds of the vote of a city council for any acquisition for properties. The funding source is not, is not the key to that, it's the acquisition. And the reason why they have that in the charter is to protect taxpayers, that we're not just going out buying things. The ARPA funds are a, a unique thing, because it's coming from the federal government.
Right.
But it doesn't change the process or the, or what we swear our roles to.
But is, is it required?
It's, I think it's required, I think, I, I do. I think, you know, when they do an audit of this, and hopefully at some point, there'll be an audit of the ARPA funds, that's not appropriate use of the audit, of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, I know you've really stressed the fact that it should have been used for things like capital purchases, like fire engines, you know, to help offset the taxpayers.
Not that it should have been, it could have been.
Yeah.
I mean, we couldn't use it, because it already had been encumbered at that time when I was even bringing it up.
Yep.
I mean, I, I, I stress it every time we spend money, because your tax dollars are going up because of, we cannot, we cannot lower your tax dollars with ARPA money, but you can indirectly do it by spending, by not spending your money through bonds. By bonding money for those things, we could have used the ARPA funds, which would then in the future lower your taxes, because we wouldn't be spending your taxes for future use. So it's, it's, it's a bit of, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul. And I hate to say that, but it is a fact, you know, and government does do that, but at the same time, we have to be responsible about how we're doing that. We also had the largest ever, the largest ever nineteen-point-five million dollars to lower, artificially lower our taxes by taking, basically draining every, every penny that we had in every location, and we don't have our free cash certified. The things that we're doing, we're just, it's, I said it was sloppy, I think it's very sloppy. It's not transparent, and it's sloppy. We're being?
Actually, you called it incompetent.
Did I?
Yes.